Yes, we'll see.
Can't see him, but. Hello, something's happening. There he is. Must be on his porch again.
How y'all doing?
Hey Marcus.
Hey Marcus.
Hey, I'm having some technical difficulties.
Well, we can hear you. You look like. You look like.
Yeah, they realized my battery was about dead till I got to the zoom, you know, I'm like. This is terrible.
There you go.
All right, Mr. McHenry, Councilman or Chairman, I think we're good.
Okay. We're streaming now, so with that, we're going to call to order the planning commission meeting for December 7th, 2020. It is just after six o'clock, so we will call this meeting to order and Ms. Sarah Lynn, can you do a roll call for us? Maybe muted.
Here, I can do it. And this is Melissa.
Hey Melissa.
Hey. Rich McHenry.
Here.
Malcolm Gorge.
Here.
Erica Page. Marcus Taylor.
Here.
Ernestine Middleton. Well, she's here. Ed Kessler. And Derek Pugh.
Here.
I'm sorry, here.
Thank you. I thank you, Sarah Lynn and Melissa for joining us as well. I want to start tonight with. Congratulations for Mr. Cook, who has accepted a new position in, as everybody already knows, will be leaving the town of Blythewood. But Brian, we don't want to let the nights skip by without saying thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, I appreciate working with each of you and and I won't be a stranger, so I'll still touch base every now and then.
Well, we appreciate it and likewise, congratulations to Mr. Pugh. It's his last meeting with the planning commission tonight, so we wish him much success in his new endeavor with Richland County. But well, he'll also be missed, so Derek, thank you for your service and we'll miss you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it so much.
Everybody had Sarah Lynn or Melissa, either one, we had notification and posting of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, everybody should have received the agenda via email and had a chance to look at it. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
A motion, is there a second?
I second it, Mr. Chair.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll approve it by acclamation with no opposed votes. And after that, we will do the pledge of allegiance and Brian, Mr. Cook has already pulled up the flag, so if everybody would stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag. And the states of America. And two republics.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Liberty. Liberty and justice.
Okay. Also with our agenda, we had emailed out the minutes from the November 2nd, 2020 meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to those minutes as presented? And if there are none, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second? Can somebody second those for me?
I second it.
Okay, got a second for them. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. And we short agenda tonight, so we have, we're down to Roman numeral two, and we do have a presentation. Mr. Sprouse with the cog is with us, so we appreciate you being here. And Brian, do you want to preface this in any way before we turn it over to Mr. Sprouse?
Just briefly, as we all know from our prior meetings, we're getting started with our comprehensive plan. Mr. Sprouse is here, obviously the cog is going to be helping us with that. And he is going to do a quick presentation that just kind of outlines us getting started and general expectations that we will be looking for when we get moving down to the next step. So with that, Gregory has a presentation, and if it doesn't work, Gregory, have it pulled up and I can share it as well.
Okay, I will give it a shot. And just before I get started, I'll just reiterate the congratulations to both you, Brian, and you, Mr. Pugh. Look, wish you both the best and Mr. Pugh, look forward to working with you on Richland County as well.
Absolutely, sir, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Gregory.
Okay, let's see if I can get this working. Can y'all see that? Okay?
There, it looks great.
Looks good.
All right, so I I'm gonna just really, really outline, just refresh y'all's memory on what we're, what we do with the comprehensive plan, why it's required and what we're, what we need to do as we update it. And so before we get into the comprehensive plan, for those of you that are not familiar with Central Midlands Council of Governments, I just wanted to give you a really quick overview. We are one of 10 regional planning agencies across the state of South Carolina, where the the state is divided into these 10 planning districts that are made up of counties' boundaries. So we represent Richland, Lexington, Fairfield and Newbury Counties here at Central Midlands, and we provide a wide range of planning, technical assistance and other services to local governments and citizens throughout the region. The the really what you can see from the graphic here, the it represents all of our program areas. So we do everything from workforce development to social services under the Old Americans Act, to providing transportation, planning, community and economic development, and just general support to our our member governments. And the real, I think, great thing about what the the councils of governments represent is we are here to provide a forum for regional coordination and collaboration amongst all of the local governments in the region. So our Board of Directors is made up of elected and appointed officials from the four counties, as well as the jurisdictions that reside within those four counties. So as we go, if you have any, any questions about what the the agency is and our role in this, please don't hesitate to interrupt me and just ask. And so with that, I will, I'll give you a little bit of overview here on what what we're doing with the comprehensive plan. Overall, the purpose of the comp plan is to develop a strategy for creating a healthy and pleasant, pleasant environment in the community that balances growth and stability, reflects economic potential and limitations, protects all of the town's investments to the extent reasonable and feasible, and really serves as a basis for regulating land use and development in the community. And we're required to do this under the Local Government Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act of 1994. And under that act, in the South Carolina code of laws, it tasks the planning commission with developing the comprehensive plan and recommending it to council for adoption. We have to review it every five years and then comprehensively update it every 10 years. And a couple of other things that are important about the state laws, that it requires a plan to take into consideration adjacent jurisdictions and other local and regional plans or issues that may impact or be impacted by the town. And it prescribes a planning process, and it's really, it's interesting because I've heard folks say from that work nationally, that we have one of the better planning enabling acts in the country in terms of the how it prescribes we develop these comprehensive plans. And one of the ways that it does that is it creates a planning process that requires us to look at data and information on existing conditions and then use that data and information to develop some needs and goals, and then to actually put some implementation strategies and timeframes to those, to those needs and goals. And it requires us to do this for 10 different elements. Now, originally, up until last, up until this year, it was, there were nine required elements. And then earlier this year, we had the the passage of a of a new state law that added another element, which I'll talk a little bit more in detail about each of these 10 elements in a minute. But just in in general, we have to look at population, housing, economy, natural resources, cultural resources, community facilities, transportation, land use, priority investment, and then resiliency is is the new one that we'll be looking at. It was, it was put into effect as part of the Disaster Relief and Resilience Act of 2020 that that again was passed, I think sometime this fall. And so the other important things here is that, once we develop this plan and get ready to adopt it, the planning commission will recommend it to council by resolution. We have to hold a public hearing with 30-day notice, and then when council is ready, they will adopt it by ordinance. And then one other final consideration is that, one of the important things about this plan is that it not only sets out a roadmap for how we want the community to grow and develop in in the future, but it also provides a benchmark for us, for you all as a planning commission to review proposals for development within the community. And the state law actually says that you you should be taking that into consideration when you are reviewing new plans and developments under your, under your purview. Are there any questions so far?
Yes, I have one question about the resiliency. Did you say that was part of the disaster relief of 2020?
Yeah, earlier this this year, the state legislator passed the Disaster Relief and Resilience Act. And a lot of it was was related to the, the, I believe, the commission that was established to look at flooding. And and so the resilience act is supposed to focus on examining natural hazards and that impact the community and the vulnerabilities of the community, and to try to identify strategies that will help the community become more resilient. And I can talk a little bit more about that in a minute here, but really, it's kind of looking at, for for the most part, like flooding and and other things that really, that the community could be vulnerable to.
Okay. I I was thinking it was related to COVID, but thank you.
Yeah, this this is specifically related to natural hazards, but I think that it's, it definitely could take into consideration everything that we are experiencing with the the COVID pandemic.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so just to give you a little bit more about each of these elements. For the population, we we typically look at historic growth trends and projections. We'll, we'll kind of pull a lot of census data on household size characteristics, education levels and trends, income characteristics. We look at demographic characteristics such as race, sex and age of the population, and really any other demographic information that is necessary for us to understand the existing situation and for future potential of the area. So one of the things that that we like to do at the cog, we, I've been working for a number of years in health, health, planning, the intersection of planning and public health. And so we'll look at health characteristics of the population. I know that was something that the planning commission was interested in. The last time we were working on the the comprehensive plan and actually included a component in there. So that's definitely something that is important to consider as we're going through this. On the housing side, it's really an inventory of the, you know, where where your housing is in the community, the types of housing that you have in terms of the diversity of the housing portfolio, the age and condition and affordability, as well as occupancy and ownership characteristics. And then natural and cultural resources, look at the those important land and water resources, conservation and mitigation priorities, any kind of physical development constraints in the community, as well as historic buildings, unique commercial residential and scenic areas. And then what's become a lot more common now is that as communities focus on things that they can do to promote art and culture within the community. So the 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 state also passed a couple of years ago, a Cultural District Act, which allows communities to officially designate cultural districts within their jurisdiction. And so that's a good place for something like that to fit into the comprehensive plan. In terms of economic development, it's inventory of workforce characteristics, employment, the really what I call the who, what and where of the economy, the, you know, who in terms of employment and unemployment, what types of sectors and industries are prevalent in the area, who are the large employers and in the growing markets? And then the where is, is where are the large employers located? But also where are people traveling to and from to get to these employment opportunities? So the workforce travel characteristics and commuting patterns is something really important to understand about your community. And that could, that segues perfectly into transportation, where we look at the current transportation infrastructure, traffic and travel characteristics, multimodal transportation options. So do you have transit connectivity? Do you have bike and pedestrian facilities available? Is that, is, are those things that the the community is interested in developing more of? And then this also discusses the relationship to the regional transportation system. So that's a very important component of of transportation, is not just how well-connected your transportation network is in your community, but how well is it connected into surrounding communities? And then the community facilities is is the element that really looks at the services that your community provides and the important things that you have to have in your community in order for it to thrive. So your water and sewer utilities, solid waste, public safety, educational institutions and park and recreation facilities. And then the land use is really kind of the meat of 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 the comprehensive plan. The way that the the Planning Enabling Act is laid out, it intends this comprehensive plan to be kind of the first step in your, in the the development framework of your community. So it it sets the vision. And then from there, your zoning and land development regulations are the implementing tool of that vision. So the land use is really important because it it helps you understand how your community is divided up in terms of different types of land use, how much is devoted to residential versus commercial, industrial, public and institutional. But then it it helps to set the the vision for what we want the future land use to look like. And that really sets the stage for zoning and land development regulations. So that's an important one that I know that the town is really interested in and focusing on on this, in this update to the plan. And then the the priority investment was was established in an amendment in 2007, I believe, where it it created a, an element in the comprehensive plan that is supposed to to be tied to the other elements and create a mechanism for really thinking about how you're going to fund all of the the goals and strategies that we identify in each of these other elements. So it ties to your your regular budgeting process for the town. If you have a capital improvement plan, it's a good way to integrate that into the comprehensive plan. And it it creates a requirement for making sure that you, as the, as the town is, is doing everything you can to coordinate with adjacent jurisdictions and on a regional level. And then one last piece of that is that it allows you to identify specific priority investment areas. So if there's like the town center development area that you want to identify as a priority area, it creates a mechanism for providing market-based incentives for a particular type of development in that area. And then the last one is the one we were just talking about. So the, in the state law, it specifically says that this element should consider the impacts of flooding, high water and natural hazards on individuals, communities, institutions, businesses, economic development, public infrastructure and public health, safety and welfare. And just like the other elements, it's supposed to include an inventory of existing conditions. It's supposed to promote resilient planning, design and development. And it it has a specific piece that is focused on coordinating with adjacent jurisdictions as you develop this. So coordinating as we develop this residency element, coordinating it with efforts that are going on in Richland County, as well as in Fairfield County, will be a really important part of this process. I believe that's, that's pretty much the the meat of what the the plan update will entail. Do y'all have any questions about any of these required elements? So what what I'm proposing, what I, what we're doing in terms of planning, the planning process for this update is we're, we're currently working to develop all of that existing conditions data. So we're looking at all of the the census data and developing the tables, figures and maps. And the way we generally do this, and when we work with a jurisdiction, is try to break it up into multiple elements at a time. So probably at our next meeting, I'll plan to present some of that existing conditions data on the population, housing and probably the natural and cultural resources elements. And and then as we look at that data, we can talk about the goals and strategies and think about them in relationship to what's currently in the plan. So in other words, what, from the data we're presenting, from what she knows, what's happening on the ground, what has changed since the last comprehensive plan update? And how is that reflected in terms of what what the planning commission views as the the town's priorities for moving forward? And then the other important piece of this is that throughout this process, we'll be doing everything we can to coordinate the update with other plans and pro, planning processes that are happening. So one in particular that's really important for us to keep our eyes on is the cog is also developing an update to our regional hazard mitigation plan. And this is a FEMA requirement that looks at natural hazard vulnerability within the, all the communities in our region. And this is required to be updated every five years, and we're about, we're halfway through that process right now. So in the next couple of months, we'll be developing a lot of new updated information on natural hazards and the the potential impacts in the area. And so that'll be really important information that we can roll right into that resiliency element. We're also working on an update to our our long-range transportation plan. So that will, that will be important to think about, as well as the the small, the sub-area transportation plan that was recently completed where, in the Blythewood area. That's, those are all things that we'll want to definitely make sure we're keeping our eyes on, as well as the ongoing update to the zoning and land development regulations of Richland County. And then finally, the 2020 census. So that's a tricky one, because where we are in the update process, we're, we're going to be making use of the most recent American Community Survey estimates. So the ones that that were just released that go up through 2018. Because unfortunately, a lot of the census data from the 2020 census will not be ready as we go through this update over the next year. And so it, I don't think that that def, that necessarily hurts us, because what it does is it positions us really well to incorporate the official 2020 census data when we hit our five-year update in a few years. And that'll be really good timing to kind of get us, keep us on that cycle in coordinating with the decennial census.
Right.
And so the last thing I wanted to do was just touch on some of the things in the the existing comprehensive plan for the town, as well as just give you some things to think about in terms of growth and development. So I went through, I went through and looked at the, the way the the 2015 plan is organized. It's really designed to kind of focus on a lot of the work that was done with the the town's master plan effort. And it synthesized a lot of the information in the, in that master plan and all the data that we pulled together from the compri, for the comprehensive plan into six different goal areas that we called economic and commercial development, land use, infrastructure, architecture, environment and transportation. And then it provided just sort of some statements about each of those areas and then had a list of action strategies. So this is what we are, the the framework for, from the last plan that we can use to start having a conversation about how we want to structure the new update. I think a lot of these things, probably just in terms of overarching goals or guiding principles, are still probably relevant. And looking back on them, a couple of them may be redundant. The architecture and land use probably could be, you know, rethought about how those things, those two things could work together. But I think in terms of the, the the goals, the the goal categories, they're probably still, could be a good framework for organizing how we think about this plan update. And so we can talk some more about that in a second. I did want to give you some numbers to look at. The 2010 census, which is the official census number that was cited in the 2015 plan, had the town's population at 2,034. I do know that there, there's, as with a lot of communities, there's some concern that, you know, every, every decennial census, that there's an undercount and that it it doesn't accurately reflect what's happening, especially when we look at the estimates. So the 2013 population estimates that we used for the 2015 plan, I think there was consensus on the planning commission that we were significantly undercounting the the total population. And so what we did was we, we actually looked at building permit data and the certificate of occupancies that were issued in the town since the last census to get, to create a 2015 estimate that we felt like more accurately reflected the population of the town at about 2,900. And then the the 2018 American Community Survey, which is what we just, what has, was just released, has the town's population estimate about, at about 3,100 people. So it will be interesting to see what the 2010 census, 2020 census shows us when those numbers come out. But right now, that's where we, that's where we stand. The map on your right shows all of the building permits that were issued in in and around the town over the last nine years. So we collect this data here at Central Midlands Council of Governments, and it gives us a good, good indication of the types of residential building activity that has been taking place in the area over the last 10 years. But it also gives us an idea of the the distribution of where in the town that's occurring. So the map gives you a good picture of, of where we're seeing a lot of that residential development occurring. And then the red dot is actually, is the the multifamily developments that that took place. And then finally, the last thing I'll leave you with before we open it up for discussion is we, one of the things that we do here is, is we're required to maintain 30-year regional population projections. And we do, we update this every five years. So we will be looking at this again when the 2020 census numbers come out and and projecting that out for another 30 years. The last ones that we did were in 2015. And we had a 2015 estimate, population estimate of around 100, 772,000 people in the four county area. And when we looked at the 2050 population projections, which are based on a wide range of things like birth, birth rates and death rates and migration rates, as well as historic development and population growth trends, we, we ended up with a really high number of about 1.3 million people in the region. So when you translate that into overall growth, that's a lot of people that we expect to to be coming into the Midlands area over the next 30 years. And again, I feel that we, it may be a little bit high and definitely things like the the pandemic and other things going on on the ground can always change, change that outlook. But I think we probably will still continue to see significant growth in the region in the coming years. And that's really important for a community like Blythewood, because as you can see from the map, Blythewood is in that category of of sub-areas of the counties that has consistently sees a lot of the growth and development in the region. And so we, we expect those trends to probably continue. So as you all know, it's very important to be thinking about land use and development types of, types of questions in order to be able to figure out how we can make sure that that we're doing everything we can to to best accommodate that growth and and maintain the high quality of life that we have in the region. So with all of that being said, I wanted to just give an opportunity to have kind of some brainstorming about, you know, what you all are thinking and and what you want to see in this comprehensive plan update. What are the particularly focused on growth and development? And even thinking, thinking ahead about some of the the housing types of questions we we might want to look at and and the things that are important to you in terms of protecting natural and cultural resources. And then we don't really have to even restrict the discussion at this point to those things. Those are just the first areas we'll be looking at. But definitely, if anything comes to your mind as a priority for consideration as we, as we start working on this update, I would love to hear it, because that'll, that'll help us as we're moving forward with this process.
Gregory, thank you for a very detailed but succinct.
Gregory, thank you for a very detailed but succinct look at our comprehensive plan. And Malcolm, I know you are heading this up as far as the planning commission goes. Gregory, you want to open it up now for some questions or comments that commissioners may have?
Sure, that, yeah, that would be great.
The one, one question I would have in, in your discussion, questions and homework, that's a great opportunity for the planning commission to start going a deep dive on how we want this to look long term. But when I look prior to coming on the planning commission and even through today, as I look at the master plan and the comprehensive plan and how these two plans dovetail together, what, what suggestions might you give us as a planning commission? Let me see the best way to say this, to get on the same page as our council as we move beyond the rewrite of the comprehensive plan. And I'll use land use and Brian, Mr. Cook has spoken to us at length on our land use map, our zoning map, updating it, keeping it relevant. But our Blythewood road connector and how it is being developed today and what we have in the comprehensive plan that was done by previous planning commissions, they don't recognize each other. They're not even, in my opinion, they're not even a shadow of each other. So all the work done in the comprehensive plan to get us set on a course for, at that time, it would have been five years before the next update or 10 years. And then the decisions made for development or businesses coming in the town. It's hard to reconcile those. So how do you see other towns mirroring these two things with leadership beyond the planning commission?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, I think, do you guys have ever do like joint planning commission council work sessions?
We do, we've had one and we're going to, we're going to be scheduling more workshops and joint meetings, which I think all the commissioners would agree that that's a great first step in being like-minded with how we move forward.
Yeah, that might be something good to think about, especially, you know, I don't, timing wise in relationship to the comprehensive plan. And you could think about, you know, doing one in the early end of this process or maybe doing one after some of, after we pull together some of this growth and development data and then using that as a jumping off point for having a, a conversation about future growth. There's, you know, that's probably a good, a good way to, to try to sync up the, what the planning commission is thinking and, and what, what you think the council might be interested in as well. But yeah, I think just moving forward, trying to figure out opportunities for, for getting some, some feedback and dialogue going would be a good thing.
Yep, I'm great. Thank you.
Gregor, I appreciate that very detailed outline. I'm trying not to speak too much because I very much want to hear what the other commissioners think or have to say. I guess the, the first point I'd like to make is that the, the master plan is obviously a very idealistic roadmap for the future. That was just based on, you know, a, a perfect scenario where everything that was identified could, could be adopted and achieved. The, the reality of course is, is very different and depends on so many different factors. Who's got land to sell? Who's, who's got money to buy? Who, who wants to, you know, invest in the town with either businesses or residential communities? And, and so the, you know, the, the practical realities start to diverge from that idyllic plan that was created in, in 2008. And, you know, it, it, it was intended to try and follow the philosophy of the, of the master plan. But, you know, you, you can't do that, you know, religiously because you're, you're, you're dealing with market forces and other external influences that, that actually dictate what, what is developed, what, what is put in place and so on. So that, that will always be a, a challenge because no one can control or dictate what the, what the future will, will, will hold. So I just wanted to sort of put that out there that the, the intention is that, you know, one is part of the other. But we, we just have to acknowledge the, you know, the practical realities of, of making all that happen. The second point is that as a, a planning commission and I think as a, as a, as a town council, if I can speak to that, is that we want to bring in as much input, as much external input into this, rethink and rewrite as we possibly can. That we want to hear from residents. We want to hear from local communities. We want to hear from businesses and industries of what they feel is, you know, great about Blythewood, what they feel is missing about, about Blythewood, what they would like to see for the future and so on. And talking with Mr. Cook about this, we thought one of the early things that we might do to start getting that up to date information would be to create some sort of survey form or questionnaire, something like that to, to get an idea of what the, you know, groundswell of opinion was. And, you know, we, we put together an outline of what that might look like, but we've never done that before. And what, one of our questions back to you is, do you have any experience with putting that kind of questionnaire together and, and, and putting it out to the, the town and our, our surrounding communities to, to, to try and gauge what the, what, what those needs and wants are as perceived by the local population?
Yeah, we definitely can, that's something we can help you all with. If you have a, if you put together kind of an outline or something that, that summarizes the key points of what, what you want to try to capture, that'd definitely be a good, give us a good head, head start in trying to put something together.
We certainly have done that. And I can swing it by the planning commissioners first of all, if I've not done that in, in recent times. And, and then be more than happy to forward that on to you to, 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 to get the ball rolling. So I can certainly take that on as a, as a, you know, an immediate action and see if, if that makes sense to the rest of the commissioners and then ultimately to, to yourselves. Because it's, it, it would be pointless having a, you know, rewrite of the comprehensive plan that the, the, the townsfolk haven't really been party to or had an input into or feel as though their voices are not being heard. So we might as well start and do that right at the very beginning and, and, you know, try and get what the, you know, the consensus was in, in order to, you know, make up the answers to some of these, these important questions that you're asking, what, what are the most important opportunities for, for, for growth, for housing, for natural resources and, and, and so on? You know, each of us can, can think of answers to those questions as individuals, but you know, we're reflecting the, the, the entire town to the best of our ability. So I just wanted to, you know, try and frame that in some, in some way to, to see what everybody else's views was, were.
And I, oh, sorry.
I'm done.
Did anyone, any of you all want to respond to that? I was just going to say one thing I've found interesting is, so you can structure questions in a number of different ways and there, there probably are some very specific types of things that you want to ask. But I also find it interesting early on in the process to allow for an opportunity in those surveys for some open-ended questions in, in particular areas. Because it, you, you may end up, you probably end up getting a lot of comments about things the town really has no control over or ability to implement. But it gives you a really good idea of what are the types of things that the, the community is interested in and, and gives you, that therefore gives you a good way to think about some of the things that you do have within your ability to control.
Right.
So I would definitely recommend we have some kind of structured, open-ended questions in there that, that really just ask people to give us their thoughts on what they would like to see in the town.
Right. And just in my own mind, the way I see this, this playing out or the way I, I think it would, it would be beneficial is at, at some point in the first quarter, the, the town council will have a, you know, a, a retreat for, for planning. And I wanted to coincide a community planning event with that, either at the same time or, or at a very similar time. And, and use, use this rewrite as an opportunity to, to actually engage people from, from the town to, to express their, their views, to hear what our responses are and what the council's responses are to, to all these, these very important issues. And just off the top of my head, because we haven't actually used the word tonight, is, is how we, we bring more people in, into the town. There's, there's various sort of donuts in, in the town's boundaries that belong to Richland County. And, you know, the questions are whether those folks would be better served if they were part of the town, whether the town limit should be expanded to increase the, 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 the population and the, 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 you know, the, the commercial boundaries of, of the town. So, so that's, that's, that's another area that I, I know is, is a, is, is quite a hot topic for, for, for council, just how much we, we want to embrace the outlying community within the, the town's boundaries. Annexation is the, the key word, which I'm struggling for.
Mr. Cook, do you happen to have the dates of that joint planning session that we were going to join council for? I think we already have that date on the books, don't we?
You're talking about for next year?
Yes, sir.
No, I don't, but I can get it for you.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I think it would only benefit us if we, Mr. George, to your point, if we go ahead and engage council and actually ask them for some dates that work for workshops moving forward as we do this. That way no surprise is had by anybody and we can kind of get the feel of what the expectation as a whole is. So we're putting out a, a document that's going to be useful.
Yeah. And I, I, I don't want to do any disservice to anyone on the town council, but you know, they, they need to feel engaged in this as much as ourselves. Because at the end of the day, they'll be the ones that will approve it. And then they have the responsibility of implementing it because, you know, a, a plan is, is worthless unless, you know, there's, there's some commitment to, to actually implement the thing. And, you know, they're, they're the, they're the drivers for that when, when all said and done.
And then Mr. Sprouse, do we have some hard fast dates that we're going to use to move forward so we can stay on track with, with this comp plan?
Yeah, and I, I need to maybe follow up Brian with you soon and just kind of iron out what that schedule looks like. Cause I know we've kind of have to get, our goal is to have this wrapped up next, over the course of the next calendar year. And so I think we'll have to move fairly aggressively in terms of, you know, probably tackling a few of these at a time. And so with that being said, it may, you know, if we just sort of plan out like maybe every other month at, at the planning commission, being able to present some of the, the results of our findings and have some good discussion about goals and strategies, then we should, we should be able to move along fairly quickly.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, cause it, when you look at it in, in total, it's a fairly daunting task to, you know, try and absorb all of it. But, you know, there, there's a, a core of, you know, basic data that is, is just a question of, of updating. And, you know, the, 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 the real important bit is just how we think the town should be moving forward, you know, under those five or six chief categories. So I, I feel sure with that, that input from the, the survey forum and, you know, a community planning session, that, that we ought to get some, some clear guidance from that and something fairly concrete that we can build on as, as opposed to us doing it ourselves and then being, you know, held to task over it saying, you know, with people saying, nobody asked me. We never had the chance to say that we, we wanted, I don't know, passenger rail or, or, or another exit from I-77 or a, a, a new ballpark in the middle of the town or, you know, whatever it, whatever it might be.
And last question, and Malcolm, probably, Mr. Cook, Malcolm, the, the longer tenured people on the commission, Ernest, you, you were involved with the last one. Is it possible for us to get, as we talk through these bullet points, topically, maybe every other month like we're suggesting, is it possible for us to get a snapshot of what the counties that surround us that are also invested in the COG, where they have gone on some of these points? So not that that will guide our decision-making, but it's always good to know what the surrounding counties that are impacted by the COG is, how their planning is progressing.
Yeah, and, you know, there's some important things for you all. As the, the, you know, Richland County, as I mentioned, is in the process of, of doing that kind of implementation phase, looking at their zoning and land development regulations. But they went through a very lengthy comp plan update process, really concurrently with the city of Columbia several years ago. And so their, their land use elements in particular could be some, should be something that we should definitely look at. Lexington County is in the process of updating their comprehensive plan right now and are going through a, a pretty in-depth exercise and getting community input and really trying to think about future growth and development. So that could be important as well. And then I know Fairfield County's been doing a lot over the years and is in, I think in the, about ready to start on an update to their comprehensive plan.
To me, that, that is such a crucial point because, you know, here, here we are trying to plan what goes on in, in Blythewood and we have Richland County, you know, abutting, abutting our, our boundaries, doing all sorts of crazy things that if, if we had the choice, we, we wouldn't want them to do. We're, we're either powerless or, or we find out, you know, after the event. And if, if, if we had more upfront information, at, at least we'd be able to, you know, strategize a bit better and, and think about how we're going to cope with the, the additional traffic loads and burdens that we're going to get from, you know, new, new neighborhoods that are completely Richland County. Um, you know, new, new neighborhoods that are, are completely Richland County. Um, are originated and, and not our own. Uh, you know, that, that's going to, just as a, as an example, and because it's so. Close or, or top of my worry list with the um Blythewood Farms. Development that's going on, on, on Langford Road uh with, you know, best part of 700 homes going there, all, all under. Richland County Planning Commission, you know, zoning and approval and authority. Um, but it has absolutely no impact on Richland County at all, but it could be, you know, desperately difficult. For the town with uh that, that additional uh traffic load that's going to uh engage with our, our, our local. Computer traffic um and, and congesting Langford Road beyond all rhyme and reason. And, uh, you know, we. N- nobody seems to care about that, but, but we sure as hell will, you know, when it, when it all comes about. Um, so, 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 so that's a challenge, but, you know, there, there's, there's, there's solutions there hopefully. Um, and, and you, you, you mentioned the coach's plan. And, and, and this is where, you know, the, the long-term vision is, is so important. Within the coach's plan, there already is a, a, a reference to widening uh Langford Road. Uh, I, I, I think that was, that was a, that was understood years ago, even before Blythewood Farms was, was dreamt of. But um, that, that could well become a, a, a very strategically important. Im- improvement for our, 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 our road system to, to deal with all that extra traffic that will be. Um, forced upon us. So, um, you know, it's. It's, it's just, it's just reinforcing the point that we really need to know what these other guys in, in our neighboring counties are doing because whether we like it or not, it's going to impact on us. And, and Fairfield is, has been, you know, a, a very quiet neighbor for so long, but um, I don't know how long that's going to last before, you know, they're, they're going to. Start impacting on our, our, you know, day-to-day business of, of running the town.
Any other questions while we've got Mr. Sprouse with us this evening? I think all this is very helpful as we um. Endeavor to get this, uh, what uh Mr. George referred to as a massive undertaking underway and get it done within side of calendar year. So. Um, if we could, for our December, I'm sorry, for our January meeting. Um, Mr. Cook, I know you're going to be bowing out here directly, but if we could get some dates. Um, to put some feet to some of these topics, so we know as a planning commission and can plan accordingly. That would be helpful and, and Gregory, I'm sure you're going to be very hands-on um through the process. Um, but I, I think um, we've been talking about this for a while now, and Malcolm, you've warned us repeatedly, but we are here and, and need to get it. And, and get going with it. So um, tonight was a very good recap. And outline of what needs to be done. And now I guess as a commission, we just need to plow forward and. Start that process.
Okay, well, in the meantime, um, if you do have any questions or anything that you want to. Reach out to me directly, Mike, just feel free to give me an email, or you, you can always give me a call as well. Um, I'm, I'm here to, to help. So anything I can do to, to help you guys do this process, just let me know.
Gregory, can, can you um get us that presentation?
Links.
Because there's, there's some, there's, there's so much useful information there to, you know, remind us of all the, 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 the different. Aspects of, 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 of this. It would be a very useful uh reference document to, to, to have on hand for. Uh, you know, our, our brainstorming, uh, planning and just terminology, really, getting, getting all that down pat.
Yeah, absolutely. Brian, is that, can you forward the copy I sent? Okay.
Yes, sir. I'll take care of it. I'll forward it.
Great. Excellent. Good.
All right.
But I, I think that's, that's, that's been a most useful review tonight. Um, I, I know. I, I talk about it a lot because I, I firmly believe in it and, and, uh, Ernstine and I. Um, had, had some previous experience in the past and, and Marcus too. Marcus, you must have been around at that time. Um, back in 2014, 15, when we were.
Oh, yeah, I was.
Yeah. So, so there, there are some old hands here.
Again, very, very helpful to have um Gregory on the call tonight. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Gregory.
And we will, as a commission, forward questions if we have any, but look forward to seeing those dates and, and. Going ahead and getting rolling in January. And with that, we can move on to um Roman numeral three for our staff update. Brian, is there anything you have there?
Um, if you're, um, Gregory, you don't have to stick around unless you want to, but thank you very much for your time and. I'll be getting with you before I exit and touch base, and we can come up with a, a game plan and, and whomever takes my place, I won't leave them out in the cold. I'll bring them up to speed and. And I stay in touch uh along the way as well. So thanks, Gregory.
Okay. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Just before you, you go, um, hopefully this is, I'm not speaking uh out of place. But, but Gregory, in the absence of anything else, I'm, I'm going to be the, you know, the, the key point of contact on, on all of this. Um, I, I think you've probably got my email and contact information, but we can certainly make sure that, that, that you have that. Uh, just, just during the transition period. When, when we get our, our, our new town administrator, whoever that is, whenever that is.
Okay. Sounds good. Look, look forward to working with you all again.
Thank you, Gregory. Appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Bye. And I will again, uh, get Gregory's presentation email to each of you and certainly we'll touch base with him and I know council. Um, we had a meetings and discussions on it. They're definitely want to be hands-on and have. Joint planning commission meetings, town council meetings to stay on the same page. So that absolutely, I believe is going to happen. Uh, so that'll be helpful as well. I just a quick uh update, I wanted to touch base on Redgate because I know that's been a question a few folks have asked. Uh, the new owners, the Dinkins have contacted me, they've talked to Mayor Franklin, they, uh, also their civil engineer has contacted me. Uh, they are working with their civil engineer on what they uh are going to propose potentially uh along the lines of what we discussed in the past about what. They want to do with the land or not do with the land, what they propose to um subdivide or not subdivide. Uh, they are working with a civil engineer. They are on his time schedule. Um, and that takes a little while to get in with the civil engineer. So the update is that they have touched base with myself and the mayor. And Heather's civil engineer touched base with me and they're still working, it's still in uh the process of coming up with a plan. Um, but, you know, they don't have anything particular to present at this time, other than that update that they gave us. So. It is still, you know, contact with them. Uh, suspect that we'll, there's something in the near future. I just wanted to give you that update.
Thank you.
Okay, certainly. You're welcome. And uh, just to reiterate, as I'm starting the meeting, I just want to. Say thank you to each of, of you, enjoyed working with each of you. And like I said, the new person that comes in, I'll, you know, we'll offer Zoom meeting with them to keep them up to date and. Um, you know, like I said, we uh, uh, had a, a, a good, um, a good run, if you will, and look forward to. You know, the comprehensive plan getting done and, and if I can help along the way, um, as you move forward with this, feel free to. To reach out in my, my new life and I'm certainly always available to help even there. So.
Well, we certainly appreciate it, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Um, and I don't know if um you've gotten anything on um, on YouTube Live as far as open citizens comments, any emails come through?
Let's see here. Nope, that would be no comments that I see on YouTube and I have received no emails other than um. Just requesting a copy of tonight's presentation from Mr. Sprouse and I'll email that out probably first thing in the morning. And um, that's it.
All right. Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda. And again, I mean, we've thanked you, Mr. Cook, and I, I think that's an understatement. And we certainly appreciate you and what you've done. And Derek, I appreciate you uh. Being on the commission and, and really look forward to seeing what you're going to do at Richland County. So um. I hate losing both of you at the same meeting. That's kind of rough, but we certainly um want to thank both of you. So.
Yeah.
If there are any other comments, and if none, I can have a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chair.